All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Rick Godley here for the CBS News. As Brent Musburger would say. Tight, tight quarters. I'm just testing, um, the stream. So let me run. Man, I'm kneeling on the ground and blah, 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 blah. So just want to see if we're coming in. Says it there. This is scheduled to start at six. Okay, I see it. I'm gonna run around the Facebook pages just to see. Yeah, I gotta put that router up maybe more higher. Yeah, man, this is a... Okay, we're coming in there. All right, I'm gonna keep the stream going. Because what the heck, right? Let me pop up the agenda for you. Volume, volume, let me look for volume. Now, this is my headset. This is not the... This is the room. All right, so we're gonna try and figure it out. All right, let me see if I can get this router up. I mean, I literally am set up. Right behind the coffee pot. You heard all of those jokes about the coffee pot cooler talk? Well, we're cooler. Cool, cool. All right, so what's the problem? Yeah, man, this is a convoluted get-getting setup they got me on. I see orange. Yeah, the equipment costs a penny. And again, the school board bought somebody. Same exact equipment. Okay, let's try this. All right, up there is the agenda. Let's get that down. I'm a bad boy. All right. We're gonna check to see in the chat. I mean, it really has a tight squeeze. Oh, what happened there? I don't even have a place for my mouse. Of course, you gotta make these meetings in the most uncomfortable confines as possible. You crying, Rick? You big baby? Oh, wait a second. I think I have the baby sound effect. Hang on. We can have fun with this. Turn that on, we'll see. I do. All right, that's a big baby.
It is amazing to watch a true artist at work.
I tell you what, um, we used to be able to do, or I used to be able to do, reports from the past. And now I can do reports from the future. Watch this. I have pretty much what everybody's gonna hear tonight. All right, where are we? Five fifty-four. What happened? Uh-oh. Looks like we're still streaming. Yeah, we're gonna keep it here. Yeah, it, uh, feels like confession. Because I'm on my knees. Getting a little hush. Just in case you want to see the friendly confines. Lincoln Parish School Board. Somebody with an education would have put this meeting in the middle of the Lincoln Parish Library Event Center, you know? Accommodate people. But then again, nobody asked me, did they? No. Where is it? Yeah, everybody's happy, happy, happy.
Where are you going, Brain?
Back to the cage to plan for tomorrow night.
Why? What are we gonna do tomorrow night?
The same thing we do every night, Pinky. Try to take over the world.
All right, Pinky?
Westinghouse, First with the Future presents the Westinghouse Desi Lu Playhouse.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to another Westinghouse Desi Lu Playhouse. Tonight, we're gonna see a story written by Rod Serlin and starring William Bendix. Our story begins in a doctor's office. A patient is sitting there. He walked into this office nine minutes ago.
Once upon a time, there was a psychiatrist named Arnold Gillespie and a patient whose name was Peter Jensen. Mr. Jensen walked into the office nine minutes ago. It is eleven o'clock, Saturday morning, October fourth, nineteen fifty-eight. It is perhaps chronologically trite to be so specific about an hour and the date, but involved in this story is a time element. It is October fourth, nineteen fifty-eight, Saturday, twelve ten P.M. If anyone is remotely interested in the element of time.
You broke my heart.
Ooh, here we go.
Gentlemen, welcome to the regular session of the Lincoln Parish School Board, Tuesday, April the fourth. If you'll please stand for the invocation led by Hunter Smith, followed by the pledge by Greg Phillips.
Please bow your head. Dearly Father, we thank you for this day. Uh, we thank you for another day to come together as a school board and as a community. Uh, we thank you for the men and the women in this room, the families they represent. Please be with us tonight as we make decisions. Be with our teachers and our students and our administrators and our support staff across this great parish. Be with our families as we're away from them tonight. Most of all, thank you for your son. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Phillips. You have the agenda there before you. As you have any changes or additions to the agenda? Otha?
Hearing none and none from the public, I move that we adopt the agenda as printed.
Okay, we have a motion by Otha Andrews to adopt the agenda as printed, second by Debbie, and Mr. Hancock both. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Agenda is adopted as printed. Approval of minutes. You've had a chance to preview the minutes of the regular session of March seventh. Any corrections, lay of clerical on these? If not, we have a motion to accept the minutes as printed. So the motion by Linda Henderson.
Second.
Second by Hunter Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion?
No. I've been in this meeting, and what I say has not been printed. I want to make a record that what I say goes on record in these minutes. People call me and ask me that nothing you say is being printed to see, that everything printed is hunkered or like everything is apple padded. It's not. So I wanted to be known that my opposition, and I wanted it to be printed.
Okay. Can we do that, Mr. Durk? Do we amend the minutes?
We can. I mean, like normally...
I talked to the lawyer. He told me you might not print it, but I requested be put in the minutes.
Okay.
All right. I did my own work.
And also, um, the deal with the school board ethics? What was the line that was added to? It was my understanding, um, because I talked to the attorney too. It was supposed to be one line that was added. What was the line?
It was a one cent statement about employees having to verbally, not verbally, but by signature test that they will be notified if any changes. It was a one cent change.
Okay, and when was this passed as far as legislative? Where is this? Because the last time, what I researched, the twenty seventeen, that was the last time it was changed. So why are we just voting on it in twenty twenty-three?
It's an audit, um, request. When we were audited by our legislative auditor, they asked that we put it in there.
Okay.
So my question is, when it comes to policies, are we adopting policies? Are we getting the recommendations from the superintendent and his designee?
We give you all the policies to study for a month, and then you all adopt them the next meeting or don't adopt them.
So you give us the policies. So we're not giving you as far as our input and, um, based on, like, the policies are not coming from us. So I was just at the state conference, and one of the things they talked about is that we need to have a policy committee, and the policies come from the school board, not the superintendent that designated.
So we get them from forethought, which are attorneys that tell us, advise us of what to put in those policies that may, that were passed usually after the legislative session.
I'll make a note.
So do we need a motion to amend the minutes then for Mr. Ferguson?
No, we ain't missing our minutes.
Yep, yep. I think y'all voted through.
Well, if you do, you don't vote.
Well, the vote never was, never was voted.
We said yes, and he said no.
Okay.
There was a majority yesterday.
And I'm, I'm voting no too.
Okay, so two noes, rest affirmative? Okay, minutes are approved as written? We were looking to adding that to the minutes, Mr. Ferguson?
Why not? Everything else added to the minutes.
Do what?
Everything else said and is added to the minutes.
That's what I say. We're looking to add that to the minutes.
The lawyer said you didn't have to look into it. He told me the law. But if you want to call it, then you go ahead and do what you gotta do. Because I'm gonna do what I gotta do and call it back.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchum, you're talking about going forward. You're not talking about the minutes from the last meeting, right?
Correct.
And whatever meeting that we come to.
All right.
He said I could do that.
Okay. We'll make sure you are in there. Okay, recognition of Shugent High School and Zinsborough School Principals.
Okay, so we, um, interviewed last Thursday. We had ten applicants. Um, we had an interview, our interview committee, which, uh, most of them are here tonight. One could not be, uh, Mr. Amiston was on that committee. Uh, Ricky Amiston, Mr. John Young was on that committee. Uh, Mandy Brown was on that. Dr. Lily Hearn was on that committee, and Dr. Doris Lewis was on that committee. Um, we interviewed all ten last Thursday. Um, started at seven thirty in the morning and finished about six thirty that evening. So I appreciate them, uh, working unanimously for the new principal at Shugent High School to be Mr. Chris Jones, which he is here tonight. Uh, Chris has been the AP Assistant Principal out there for the last eight years. Um, he's got a total of seventeen and a half years total in education, and, um, I believe Chris will be a great principal for us out there and continue to lead that school, um, in a positive direction. And, um, Chris Jones is our new principal at Shugent High School. Can I say a few words?
I just want to thank the committee for taking the time to do these interviews. Uh, and I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity. Uh, I look forward to leading Shugent High School. Uh, we've met with our teachers this afternoon, and we expect to continue doing great things out there. Uh, I want to welcome, if any of you want to come by and visit the school, you're welcome to at any time.
I think you've got your family here.
I do. I've got my wife in the back, my mother. Uh, my dad was a high school principal, and, uh, he was, I grew up over in Monroe, and, uh, this is kind of a lifelong dream to be a high school principal, and I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any way that we can support you, please ask.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right.
And then also, we did at the same time interview for Zinsborough School. Um, the committee also recommended for that, uh, Ms. Lacey Hokel as the principal of Zinsborough School. She's been the interim for the last year. Uh, has been with our system for the last seven years. Was in some, uh, in the business world before that. Lacey is actually not here tonight. She is traveling back with the FFA route from Zinsborough, from Baton Rouge, and did not get back in time to make it tonight. But, um, she will come to another board meeting if we would like for it to. So Lacey Hokel will be the new principal at Zinsborough.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comment from board members? These two individuals? Okay, moving forward into unfinished business, approved policy manual revisions, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, last month, board members, you were given two policies recommended for revision. Uh, one was JDD suspension, and the other was JDE expulsion. Uh, it is now time to make a decision regarding those changes. Uh, the change was, uh, upon the fourth, out of school suspension, uh, schools may request expulsion here, and it is due to revise statute seventeen two-two-three of legislate. Uh, and we are asking the board to approve these two revisions.
Okay, heard the recommendation from Mr. Young. Any questions?
So were there, uh, do we have a discipline committee, um, that as far as, um, meet and discuss developing these policies? And procedures?
We have a discipline committee, yes. Mr. Nutt chairs that with, uh, within the district.
Okay, and so who, um, I mean, how many, as far as who all is on the discipline committee? Not exactly personnel, but like, what is it? Um, how many, uh, employees are on it?
I'd have to get that list and see who's on there for you.
Okay, so my question is, because I'm looking at the policies, and what really bothers me is, um, we don't discuss like the breakdown of ethnicity as far as suspensions, ISS, and even placements over. I mean, we talk about we have a zero tolerance policy, but when students go over to the alternative school, are we tracking to look to see the demographics at the alternative school?
Uh, I mean, Mr. Nutt does send out a list to us all each month of who's there and how many suspensions have been expelled, or how many people have been placed over there.
And do you look at it by demographics?
I'm not sure that that's on there, no.
Okay, so that's when I'm requesting monthly board meetings is to look at, um, the ethnicity per campus when it comes to suspensions, ISS, and expulsions.
The reason she's saying that is that when you combine all these schools, six, seven hundred kids on the spot, that discipline is gonna triple. Truancy is gonna triple. Hell, that did it thirty-seven years. And I saw it happen. You can't put a bunch of kids, especially the little ones, and then you're gonna go and inflate the school. It's gonna be a heck of a job with security. Nashville experienced it. Right, you know, so you gotta think about a lot of things.
Mr. Ferguson?
Look.
That's, that's not necessary, buddy.
That's not.
You want to bet?
That's not necessary.
I was a professor for thirty-seven years, and you wasn't. So how you gonna sit here and tell me?
I'm an education graduate, but we don't have to talk about what happened in Nashville.
It don't make no difference.
It don't have to.
You can't control it, and I can't either. So hell, you powerful. That's what I'm saying. You put all them kids in one spot, that's what you gonna ask for. But then don't be trying to question me. I know what I'm doing. We did it a long time. But you wasn't a disciplinarian, you wasn't a system principal, and you wasn't a principal.
Okay, any more questions on these policies?
I believe that we approve those policies.
Can we have a motion, second by Danny Hancock? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
No.
Two noes. Uh, so motion carries. Policies are adopted. All right, moving into new business, presentation from the Coalition Against School Closures. Uh, Dr. Liz White and Reverend Terrence Flukas.
Uh, good evening to, uh, this, Dr. Mr. Durk, the superintendent, uh, Lincoln Parish School Board members, and, uh, Board President, Mr. Mitchum. Uh, I am Terrence Flukas, and I am co-chair, uh, along with Dr. Liz White for the Committee, Coalition Against School Closures. And we are here today for one purpose and one purpose only, and that is hoping that this board would reconsider their decision to consolidate four elementary schools into two enhanced schools on the north side of Interstate twenty. Um, we believe that closing two schools on the south side of, uh, of I twenty will be a detriment to our community. And so we here, we understand that, uh, this committee, this board took a vote, uh, back in the month of February to, uh, consolidate four elementary schools, but in the best interest of this school system, we believe that, uh, uh, this is a decision that should have been made with input from the community, first of all. And because it was a decision that's made without the input of this community and these stakeholders, we believe that the, uh, uh, we should vote no against this proposition to consolidate four elementary schools into two expanded schools. Uh, and we are here to appeal to this school board to reconsider the vote, uh, that we may have some input as to the changes that are taking place within this school system, especially when they take, when they affect our children, our parents, and the community as a whole. Because when you close two schools in one community and expand two schools in another community, any will have a step further, uh, in what she's going to present.
The Coalition Against School Closures appeals to the Lincoln Parish School Board and the superintendent to con, to consider a resolution to reverse the school board's decision to permanently close two schools, whereas the Lincoln Parish School Board in its regular meeting, February seventh, twenty twenty-three, voted seven to four to move forward with a sixty-five million dollar capital improvement plan that would expand two lower elementary schools in Ruston to K through five and shutter two, three through five upper elementary schools. Whereas the Lincoln Parish School Board and the superintendent are charged with the responsibility to work together in making decisions about equality public education for all children under their care with a primary focus on student achievement. Whereas parents, community representatives, and other stakeholders in the Ruston School District were not included in the planning process, resulting in confusion, distrust, frustration, and other pushbacks from the community at large. Whereas the Lincoln Parish School Board has produced no relevant data, comprehensive research, or feasibility study to support the claims made for a large-scale expansion project and the school closures proposal. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Coalition Against School Closures appeals to the Lincoln Parish School Board and the superintendent to reverse their decision to close Cypress Springs Elementary School and Ruston Elementary School until stakeholder groups in the Ruston School District have been engaged prior to making the final decision and until extensive research, including a cost analysis, has been conducted to support all aspects of the proposed project. Signed by the two co-chairs of the Coalition Against School Closures, Terrence Flukas and Liz White, and other committee members of the Coalition Against School Closures, Mr. Carl McCarter, Ms. Shan Chambers, Mr. Bill Smith, Ms. Sharon Mayfield, Reverend Julia Sumler, and Mr. W.D. Walker.
Can I give my confidence to the school board president?
Sure. Yes, sir. They all have it. Yes, sir, I put it all in our package. Yes, we have it in our packets.
All right. Comments from board members?
So have we done a traffic assessment?
We have looked at, um, the number of cars that could be increased. So we first looked at buses. So all of the buses that go to those two already go there. Um, so there would be no more bus traffic going to either one of those schools. We have looked into possibility of how many cars would be added to the car line, but that's pretty hard to determine from year to year because some, it won't be doubling it because some year, many years, there's kids that go to both schools, so parents are dropping off at both. But we have not completed a traffic study as of yet. I mean, we would need to do that down the line before we started the project, so.
But you have took the distance from the south side to the north side, haven't you? Well, our kids gonna get up early in the morning, and you need the distance from bus route to bus route to see if...
So we've talked to bus drivers.
That's feasible.
Right, so we've talked to bus drivers, and, um, they feel like they could start their route anywhere from ten to twenty minutes later because if we're not gonna stop from the south side, if we're not gonna stop and unload or load at Ruston Elementary or Cypress, then they would go straight there. So it would take about fifteen minutes is what they've told me off the, many of their routes. Some of them less, some of them a little more. Because you're not in, you don't stop at Cypress Springs or Ruston Elementary, let kids off, or wait in line to load or unload there. So we feel like we could start the route at least fifteen minutes later.
Some of these kids live farther than what is expected, you know? Took them all the way to the north. These are the ones I'm concerned about. Because in the study, you found the kids are tired and sleepy, not gonna perform well in the afternoon.
Right.
They too sleepy. And right now, I don't know what it's, it's a sleepiness or what it is, but they failing now. I can't see getting them up early or bringing them.
Wouldn't be earlier. I mean, if they're in K one-two, they're already going to that school.
Not at Cypress Springs or Ruston Elementary.
At K one-two, because we don't have that there. Everybody in K one-two either goes to Glenview or, uh...
That's now, but I'm talking about...
Right, you're Chris now. Right, if, if we add on to those schools, then we would make three, four, and five go there.
But they're still all on the other side of town.
Right, they are, yes.
They not close to these other kids that gonna be late, sleepy, and can't graduate from Ruston High School, can't graduate from high school, the junior high, and drop out because they can't perform. My outlook is for every child in this system, not for a handful of people, you know? And I was gonna ask you, you know, what black people... And I was gonna ask you, you know, what black people were in this committee when y'all made this decision? Who had any input?
We went around to every elementary school and talked to the entire faculty. Sir?
I looked for black people participating in this decision. I haven't found one yet.
So we went to every elementary school. I did individually, talked to them.
Eighty-five were said white teachers. So wasn't no black ones there?
There are. I mean, I've gotten even as of today.
Especially it.
I mean, as of today, I mean, I had several teachers talking to me about what, some questions about it. They were.
So you give me their name, I go talk to them, make sure it happened.
I mean, that's up to them if they want to talk to anybody about it. I mean, they asked me specific questions. I answered it for them and what I did today.
And then I got another question is, you, you got schools that you're closing, but you go visit the schools you feel ain't loaded. You know, I would at least try to talk to the people at Cypress Springs, all the people in the community that'll, that'll know, they know what's gonna happen, you know?
David, he went to Cypress Springs and Ruston Elementary.
Did you go with him?
I, I went to, uh-
Dude, stop answering. Here you go. You don't know. Stop answering.
I did.
I can't talk?
You don't talk to me.
I did.
Count me out.
I went to Cypress Springs with Mr. Durant. There are not that many kids out in my area.
Parents come to Cypress Springs?
Not to the meeting that they, uh, talked with Mr. Durant. Not yet.
Okay, no.
So we're, we're, we're asking taxpayers, this is sixty-five million dollars, and we haven't done a traffic assessment at the two schools? Is that what you're saying?
Right, we're not required to do one, yet.
Uh, just let me, uh, say this. If this school board has a heart for the community and the children of this parish, you would reconsider this vote. This is more than just expanding and building those schools. People's lives are involved in this decision. It's going to affect children, their parents, and the whole community when you shut down two schools on one side of town and expand schools on another side of town. We had another, a meeting at my church and there was a parent, she was just all upset and she was crying because she didn't know what was gonna happen to her child once this takes place. People need to feel comfortable that what's coming from this board will be in their best interest. And right now, they don't have that finish. If this board has a heart, please reconsider your action.
Mr. Smith?
I have a concern. It doesn't appear that anybody around this table share that concern. You know, we've gotten all off into race. Something I thought we had learned long ago to deal with. You know, and, and it shouldn't be that way. My problem started the night you all voted. When I saw a seven-four vote, I said, we got a real problem. It was right down racial lines. Now, if you all are gonna send that kind of message, that kind of message to any community, it is wrong. It is really wrong to send that kind of message. I think I know most all of you around this table. And it's not about who wins or who loses. It's about getting something done to help the kids in the Lincoln Parish school system. And you all are charged. You all are charged with leading this. And if you're gonna lead it down racial line, I think we all need to go home.
I appreciate your comments. I really do. And you and I have had this discussion many times before. But I'm gonna basically, I'm glad to see you Pastor Sumlin, and I would like to see you at some future point. Here's the scenario. Pastor Sumlin, is Mrs. Sumlin in the room?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Sumlin, would you step up, please?
Well, she had to step up.
That's alright. Pastor Sumlin, this is an article from February, March thirty-first, and the issues that my colleagues. It would be a misnomer. The vote was seven-four. The vote was seven-four. That means that four people voted with you in this coalition. They know who they are. The vote was seven-four. It's a bit disconcerting. And there are people in this room who have agendas. You know who you are. I've listened here and I didn't attend any of those meetings. Mrs. Sumlin, I'm glad you're here because I'm, I, I want you to clarify something for me and thank you for showing up. No matter what, ten years from now, and Bill Smith, you know this gentleman, there are truths, there are facts, and there are opinions. I've heard all of these talking on opinions. There are truths, there are facts, and there are opinions. Now, everybody got an opinion. Okay, so be it. Here's what's factual. Four people voted for you. My colleague Linda Henderson. My colleague David Ferguson. Miss Danielle. Oh, yeah, I voted with you too. And even though I didn't attend your meetings, and I'm gonna say it's a point of personal privilege, if you'll allow me, Mr. President, and you stop me when I go for my ten minutes, then I'm gonna ask you. Okay, then I'll ask you ten minutes.
You call, wait, you call my name. Let me, let me say something. First of all, you're not addressing a thing he just said.
Let me try to, sir.
What I got to say.
Alright, sir.
What he was saying to you, sir, was anytime you got a vote to go down racial line, you got a problem. Anytime you got a vote to go down racial line, somebody should have stopped and said, maybe we need to reconsider. That's the only thing he was trying to say. Now, what you're talking about, I don't have a clue.
Well, let me try to explain it. Let me try to explain. Let me try to explain it. Here are the words. Help me out here, Mrs. Sumlin. Quote, "In talking to parents in the community, I found out many of our children, particularly black children, are going to a school three days a week." And it references you, said Jackie Sumlin, Coalition Against School Closures, and retired teacher. Because they are sleeping, they're tired, they can't get up, what do you think is going to happen if these schools are further away? Is that your comment?
Yes, that is my comment.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Do you have a question for me?
I'm, I'm in supporting of your assessment. I support your viewpoint. I think everybody in this room, I can't speak for my other colleagues, but I think if you will, if you would poll them, I think you would have pretty much unanimous vote. So-
To say to you where my viewpoint came from?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think it might be in that paper. I know it was in one of the other papers.
Yes, ma'am.
I talked to parents on the east side, the west side, the south side, and I didn't go to the north side. And I talked to children. And I asked their parent first, may I talk to your child if he or she goes? Of course. And so I asked, what time you get up to go to school? And I think that's in the paper too.
Yes, ma'am.
One member said to me, five fifteen. I said, four years old. I said, how do you know it's five fifteen? Because my mommy says it's five fifteen, you better get up. And I said, what do you do after you get to school? After I eat some breakfast, I go to sleep. And I said, well, maybe you study your lessons after, uh, before I go to lunch. And when I come back from lunch, I go to sleep again because we have nap. So that said to me, there's very, very little learning. Now, not only did the children and their parents stay up, and some of the parents started carrying their children to school because of them sleeping. Complaints from teachers, teachers in the Lincoln Parish school system, who are saying, and they said it at some of our meetings, that they had come because of concern that children were not learning. Our children sleeping, these little ones, the four and five-year-olds, they are sleeping. And we start our teaching after they go to school. So I am saying that if in fact, and I had stepped out of the room, so I don't know what your discussion was in regard to the bus routes and how early and so forth they will be, uh, going. And I said this too, that children are on the bus at six o'clock in the morning. That's the reason why they're getting up at five fifteen. And I've seen at my daughter's, I have seen at my daughter's house, which is in the Ruston south side, where the bus stops on the corner at six-ten and there are children already there. So then I want to know, are these children prepared when they get to school to actually learn? Do they have the rest? Do they have the energy? And that was my concern about this. And I said I became involved in this simply because at first I Lewis Schools proposed to be shut down and I owned property over there, which meant that our property, if that's what someone had, we were gonna lose the value of it. And I have heard that from Cypress Springs Hills, as well as Cypress Springs, that their concern is the value of their property, those schools. That school.
But one of the best, in addition to that, up and above that, what happens after that? If a parent, single parent, school's on the north side of town, the single parent child misses school bus. She don't have a car. What happens to that child?
I, I, I understand your concern, sir, and, and I'll address that point. Mrs. Sumlin, again, thank you. If you, I can't speak for my colleagues. They can speak for themselves. I would think though, I would think, Mrs. Sumlin, that you will get the support. We understand the historical.
I said, that was the reason.
No, no, I, 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 I understand. But I, I want to say to you, I support your viewpoint. I personally support your viewpoint. But I still will remind the members of the Coalition, the vote was still seven-four. Now, people may agree to disagree with me for, for whatever reason, that's fine.